I am, I started the recording, you can proceed. Go ahead, we're good.
Go ahead, Mike. Call the.
Call the, uh, what's that? Yeah, call the Finance Administration Committee to order roll call.
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods. Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley, Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here. Okay.
Is everyone?
Mike? Yeah, it's everyone.
All right, need approval minutes for the meeting February eleventh, twenty twenty-one, Finance and Administration Committee minutes.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Uh, you need a roll call on that again, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
You might be on mute again.
Yes.
Oh. That is done. The report recommendation for fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, I guess we'll go over to Brad. Before I do that, just remember, we've already been over most of this in the CIP, and we change this every year, so for the sake of time, let's get this one over with. So I'll turn it over to Finance Director, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, um, got the budget electronically two weeks ago, um, and we had hard copies here at City Hall, if you wanted them, uh, then it was also included in the packet last Friday with the slide deck that we're gonna go through as well. Let me see, Jeff or Nick, could you guys give me, uh?
Yeah, Brad, man, hold on one second, Brad.
Yep. No worries.
Uh, Nick's gonna have to do it, I don't know, it's not letting me.
Okay.
It's, uh, not showing up.
Nick, are you there? Can you, Brad co-host?
I am, I'm working out of, I'm having some computer issues.
Well, I can kind of talk through it, um, you know, so this year's budget, um, you know, there were, um, high level, there was no, um, expanded level items, I know in the past, you know, we have the green or the red sheets in there to be approved or recommended, not recommended, uh, you know, additional programs, additional personnel. Uh, there are no expanded level item sheets this year that we have to negotiate through. Honestly, the only thing that really changed from last year is the facility manager position that was, um, approved as an expanded level position, uh, due to the ongoing COVID was never filled, and we didn't feel that we'd get to a point this fiscal year where we would fill it, so we removed it uh, from the budget, full stop, uh, it's still on staff's radar, um, but given the position that council had last year with it, and then just the ongoing pandemic and everything surrounding it, we didn't feel it'd be uh, appropriate to try to fill it this year as well, so that has been removed. As you're going through the deck, there were a few, uh, departments that changed, uh, central services, which is where a lot of the stuff that was quote-unquote citywide uh, items such as healthcare, um, you know, the city's audit, things of that nature, were all dumped into there. Uh, as we've gotten further into implementing the ERP, uh, it's become obvious that the span of control over those accounts and the underlying account numbers lended themselves to being, uh, budgeted out of the department that had the budgetary control over those particular line items.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Woods is here.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.
Um, and so, a number of those items, um, were moved to, uh, the city manager's office, there was some moved into community development, some into finance, and one item, uh, one line item into, uh, the police department. Uh, in the budget book, uh, there was the central services page, we did color code those changes to try to make it as easy as possible to follow those. Uh, and then in the operating departments where those were moved, um, the trailing years, um, so as to not mess up the actuals to tie back to the audit, uh, those numbers were presented in the operating departments, those numbers were then put in with italics. Um, that way you could still see them for trend purposes, but, um, but they weren't included in the totals, um, so that's, that's why those were presented that way. Also, this year, um, again, with the implementation of ERP, how the healthcare, uh, had to be handled, we had to change. Again, that was previously in central services. Um, with the new ERP, it gets tied to the individual and where their home, uh, what the system calls orgs, their home organization is, um, and it maps it to that, so it was not gonna be possible to map everything to central services, since obviously staff isn't budgeted out of central services. So we had to move all of those out of central services into the operating departments. Uh, along with that, the, uh, what staff contributes, uh, was also then gonna be able to be booked as a contra-expense as opposed to a manual revenue JE that we normally do.
Brad, I'm just gonna, uh, it's not working to allow you to share your screen, so I'll just, I'll try to do mine, so, which slide?
Jeff, before, Jeff, before we finish, I'm gonna turn this meeting back over to Alderman Woods, this chairman. You got it? Hello?
I said you, yeah, you can keep rolling if you want.
It's all right.
I'll sit back.
It's, it's all right, it's your chair.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
We kept it warm for you.
All right, nice.
All right, um, yeah, so Jeff, if you wanna back up a little bit, uh, yeah, okay, all right. We just finished my thought on the, the, uh, the health insurance, we'll, we'll get to it again here in a couple slides, but, um, so instead of us doing a manual journal entry to capture, uh, the employee contributions, the system, uh, is attaching it to that healthcare code and allowing it to be booked as a contra-expense and offset, which is how it's been done in the water and sewer fund for years. Um, so that presentation is now consistent throughout the budget with the healthcare and the employee contribution being booked in the operating department, so, um, I'll kind of highlight that as we, we get, go through where some of the larger, uh, changes in numbers are, but that's, that's kind of some of the, the high-level background on that. So, okay, so we can kind of just, some of the, some of the stack we've already been through, but then a lot of it's the same as in previous years, uh, so the city has six different fund types, the general fund, which is only the general fund, uh, special revenue funds, which include, uh, you know, road and bridge, NFT, uh, TIP funds, a couple others, capital projects funds, that's the capital project fund, enterprise, uh, is the metro lots and patient water and sewer fund, internal service fund is a surf fund, and the trust and agency is the police pension fund and the special service area fund. Uh, so, across those six fund types, on the next slide, the city has fifteen active funds. Uh, seven have a proposed budget increase, eight have a proposed budget decrease, uh, one note, uh, as we've talked in the past, you know, water and sewer, uh, on a cash basis is showing a positive presentation. Once you add depreciation, it shows a decrease, uh, again, depreciation is not cash, but technically on a budgetary basis, it's a decrease, but again, from a cash standpoint, um, with the rate increases that were passed a couple weeks ago, uh, it is showing a positive. Uh, capital spending, we're all aware, kind of where, where the CIP is at, uh, big projects were two and three, uh, the project at the school, uh, this coming year to try to finish off that northern end. Uh, the budget overview, again, uh, same as we've done kind of each these last few years. Um, each department or fund has its own sheet in the deck that correlates with the tab in the budget binder. Um, normally we would have the expanded level sheets, like I said, we have none this year. Uh, we try to get a consensus on each department or each fund before we move on, that way, you know, we don't go from admin and then we're in tourism, then back to finance, you know, try to, try to keep it as, uh, uh, consistent as possible, obviously, if there's something that comes up that's glaring that we need to readdress, or we would do so, but to the greatest extent possible, we try to keep this as linear as we can. Uh, so we start with the overview of the entire budget and then move through the different fund types. And then, uh, today's the twenty-fifth, get through as much as possible, uh, and over the whole thing. Uh, if we need to come back, that would be on March eleventh. So unless there's anything else, we'll keep going, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. All right, so, uh, budget overview, this is all funds. Um, you can see the budget and projected for last year, and then what we're proposed for this year. Kind of the reason for that dip in the revenues is just the timing of when we got the, uh, bond issue for the stormwater bonds, we figured it'd be in fiscal twenty-one, we actually got those proceeds a week before fiscal twenty ended. So, again, um, it's not really, there's just a timing issue on the issuance of the bonds, so not really anything, um, anything wrong with the structure or structural, um, components of the city, it was just the timing of the bonds. And then back to the forty-six million, again, that includes the debt issue for our, uh, the, uh, stormwater project by the school, the low-interest loan through the IPA. Um, and again, the expenditures, um, again, it's just a timing issue with when we got the bond receipts, part of it is also, um, we haven't spent all of the money for the phase-one project, as it's not, uh, as my understanding, you know, completely complete, one hundred percent complete, so, really, again, there's not really any, uh, structural issues, it's really just the timing of these capital expenses, uh, how they're hitting the books, um, just kind of the beginning and tail end of, uh, each particular year. Oh, also in twenty-one, there was money budgeted, um, for a debt issue for, um, uh, the, uh, project in the second TIF that, uh, as we know, did not happen, so, obviously, that, that money was not spent in fiscal twenty-one. Going forward, and then this housekeeping, I did mention this a little bit, um, you know, personnel costs are, um, per the union contracts, uh, so those were, uh, built in accordingly, uh, the cities I M R F rate did go down a little bit this year, uh, due to better than, um, what they project for their returns in the stock market or for their investments. Other than that, um, like I said, some of the departments did change fairly dramatically, uh, year over year, but that has a lot to do with the closing of central services and, you know, the reallocation of the healthcare costs, so when we get into the numbers, we'll see it's not, uh, some of them look, look pretty significant, but it's overall, uh, when we get to it, the general fund, uh, actually shows a decrease, uh, in expenses for this year. Again, expanded level item summary, uh, no expanded level items this year, so we don't have to worry about, uh, green or red sheets going forward. So in the general fund this year, um, we started this last year, um, and then with the closing of central services, this really really came to pass this year, so in administration, there's now, um, the city manager's office, clerk's office, those are actually consolidated into one. Legal is its own organization, HR is its own org, IT and marketing all have their own, um, organizational codes in our chart of accounts now and are presented, uh, that way in the budget book. Community development, they have their operations, um, which is Ed and, and his team, and then the building maintenance accounts, which are, you know, like the HVAC contract, the cleaning supplies, uh, things of that nature, that was under their purview in central services, and so that got moved as a, uh, different division of community development. Uh, finance, uh, we picked up, what do we pick up auditing services, sales tax rebates, uh, credit card fees, uh, generator program and a couple other small things, uh, but still within the same organization. Uh, police department, uh, they picked up the police pension fund, that contribution, so when you see their number changed by a million and a half dollars, that's what that was, border fire and police, that stayed the same, uh, public works, no changes, and central services, um, as I said, that ultimately went up going to zero, uh, in this year's budget. So it keeps going, Jeff, and, or I think Nick said he got me fixed, if you want me to, if you want me to do it, Jeff, either way.
Uh, Brad, yeah, you can take over, I'll stop, screen's very, you take over.
Yeah. All right. So, we're right, right now, um, general fund, uh, based upon, uh, current trends and expectations, uh, we're expecting, despite all of the COVID, uh, fund that we've had, then the year with the surplus of right around, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, again, it might be a little bit more, a little bit less, just depending on how the last couple months go, but that's kind of where we're, um, expecting the year to be. Um, you can see, um, here in the revenues line, the revenues are a little bit lower than we expected, uh, but we're really picking it up as that expenses, or expenses are coming in, um, you know, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars less than we had anticipated. So really, like I said, the revenues are taking a little bit of a hit, but, um, the real pickup is on the expense side of things. And then as we're going through the general fund budget for the fiscal twenty-two budget, um, showing a surplus of, uh, a little over two hundred and six thousand as presented. Uh, and so, that's a pretty good place for us to be, um, did mention in the, the letter transmittal that the, uh, the money for the rent for, uh, the property with any public works building's gonna be, we didn't want to include that, count on that, so we know that that's gonna be gone in, you know, six months to a year, so we didn't want to, uh, face any of our long-term assumptions on that, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you take that out, we're still, you know, fifty, fifty-five thousand would be good, which again, that's a pretty good place for us to be, uh, all things considered, uh, heading into fiscal twenty-two. So summary of the general fund revenues, um, kind of see where, um, you know, everything largely, um, is pretty static from one year to the next. Uh, the one I will that obviously jumps off the page is its charges for services. Um, as I mentioned, kind of, uh, at the top, there is the, uh, where we had to change the healthcare contributions from the employees, uh, that was being booked into this charges for services line item, so that's come out of here as a revenue and gone as a contra-expense against the healthcare line items in each of the operating departments, so it, it is a little, uh, unnerving to see a sixty-seven percent decrease in one category, but it just moved from this line item to a different line item budget, so, um, it's not, it's not gone, it just, just moved. Other one, investment income, um, you know, interest at the banks, uh, has gone basically to nothing again. Um, fortunately, we do have a fair amount of money at IPBC, um, our health insurance pool, and they have a lot more, a lot broader, uh, investment authority, and so they are able to generate, uh, better returns on those monies. And so that's what, uh, that's what's driving that. The only other thing really of note, the interfund transfer going down by the twenty-five thousand, we had booked twenty-five thousand, uh, to come in from the water fund additionally for that facilities manager, uh, but as I mentioned, that, uh, position is not in the budget this year, and therefore was not, uh, appropriate to book that additional twenty-five thousand dollars in a transfer from the water fund, so we took that out. Uh, there's just the notes, uh, basically on what I just said. Uh, summary of expenses, um, again, obviously contractual going down forty percent, uh, is a little, little jarring, um, but that is, uh, the healthcare number that actually got moved up into the personnel line item, so, again, and it's not a dollar for dollar because again of that, uh, the revenue offset in there, uh, but that's why contractual went down, the healthcare came out of contractual, went into personnel, so that's a large reason that that's up so significantly in personnel. You see commodities. A lot there, um, and then the only other really thing is other going up almost eight percent. That's, uh, largely driven by, uh, the increase in the police pension fund contribution, um, which we discussed, I believe at a previous meeting, we were able to smooth that out a little bit, but that's, um, that's really what's driving that, uh, the increase in the other line item there. Alderman Woods?
Yes, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Uh, when could we ask questions? When would you like us to ask questions, like at the end of his thing of each fund?
After we passed the budget, we all went home. No, go ahead, if you have a question, let's, let's go through it, let's not try to create questions, but if you got one now, I think it's okay to ask.
But I, I, just a couple, um.
Go ahead.
So, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the individual pages, so, um, so Brad, on page thirty-six, this use, the use tax, it was like up a hun, it was like up a, almost a hundred and thirty thousand. So what, what was the, that reasoning behind that?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, yeah, so, the use tax, um, that's one of the, um, items that we base our guidance off of from the IML and their guidance, and, um, a lot of that is coming in, uh, with the change in the online, uh, taxation. Uh, if they have a brick and mortar, whatnot, then it flows through sales tax, if they don't, then it goes through use tax, so, um, with the addition, I guess, the expansion of the online taxation items that the state's been passing, uh, that number's gone up pretty significantly, um, due to, um, due to that change in the legislation, so, I guess that's a, a win for, for everybody.
Um, the, the other one I was gonna ask was the telecommunications tax, is that, is that from, uh, taxes from like the cellphone towers and things, or what, what is that from exactly? But I see that we budgeted a million and it was, we came in at about seven ninety.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, that is, um, from basically old landlines and, um, phone bills and whatnot, um, that revenue stream for the last probably six or seven years has been on a steady decline, um, as people are getting rid of landlines, um, you know, cutting the cord, things of that nature, um, yeah, so they, it's just one of those where the legislation on what's a quote-unquote telecommunications device or charge and how it's taxed is set at either the state or the federal level, so I mean, this isn't a, a Wooddale, um, unique decline in revenue, it's, it's, I mean, all the finance directors, I mean, we're all scratching our heads with what to do with this one. Um, to your question about the cellphone towers and, and things of that nature, uh, those, the cellphone tower leases are actually in the water fund.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, the cord cutting and whatnot, that would affect the cable franchise fees, um, like if you get rid of your Comcast, Xfinity, your AT&amp;T, U-verse, things of that nature, that would affect the, uh, the cable franchise fees, which is a little bit further down on page thirty-six, it's the first line under charges for services, and that one's been holding okay. Um, we are investigating, um, oh, what do you call it, a streaming tax, um, that would affect, um, you know, Netflix, Hulu, um, you know, some of those services, um, but we're still, that's still only been implemented by a couple of entities here in Illinois, so that's still kind of a, a work in progress.
Okay, just a couple more things real quick, uh, yeah, I know, you know, and look, yeah, it looks like it was declining, but for some reason you budgeted a million dollars for it, but were you, was there some expectation that was gonna go up, but I see it's, yeah, we're estimating seven ninety? Like, maybe it was on the downtrend, but then your actual budget was like a million dollars, I'm just kind of curious why we budgeted so much for that.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, uh, yeah, so a couple years ago, there was a group of finance directors and IGFOA working with IML to try to convince the state to, uh, modernize the language for that revenue stream. Um, and I guess the short version is, um, it didn't go anywhere. So, uh, uh, for a while there, we were all optimistic that there would be some change to it and maybe a little bit of a pickup in it. Um, and, well, that, so, unfortunately, that didn't happen.
And then, final question, alarm fees, uh, I mean, we estimated five thousand, we collected seventeen-five, is this like alarms that go off for the police or the, from the police department, or?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, yeah, that's, uh, false alarm fees, um, that, um, yeah, I believe, uh, maybe the chief could, could give a little better color to this, but yeah, it's for alarms that businesses in town, I believe they get a couple of warnings before we start charging them. Um, but yeah, those are for, um, false alarms for, again, I don't know particularly if they're burglar alarms, fire alarms, what, but, um, but those would, yeah, for false alarms, that's what that is, yes.
I mean, it seems like those tripled though, did we raise our fee on that or something, or how come it, it basically tripled from what it normally is?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, yeah, for a while, um, we kind of had put that on, on hold, um, along with a few other things within the city, and so when they came back, um, I don't know if it's a thing where people were used to getting away with it, or, you know, or if, uh, you know, systems were not as tight as they used to be, whatnot, but, um, Mr. Chairman, I think Chief Estha wants to comment.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, so e-essentially, these are, this is for commercial burglar alarms, uh, per calendar year, they get three free, um, you know, mistaken alarms, uh, and then after that, uh, council about four or five years ago had passed an ordinance to allow for charging for police responses. So they're billed, uh, we do the invoicing and go through the, uh, finance department. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we did have a switch over to the new, uh, record system, uh, in the PD side, and we had to work with them to, uh, categorize the false alarms correctly to better even track that. Uh, so we paused that for about, uh, four months until we could get back on track, and then we were at the end of the year, which then they start again with, uh, the three basically free passes before they're charged, so, uh, twenty twenty was another, another full year of, uh, having those in place.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Uh, Mr. Wilson, you wanna continue?
Sure. Um, in this slide is just the summary of, of the, uh, oh, did want to mention, yeah, in contractual, um, this went, uh, contractual, contractual went down, uh, one thing of note, um, and again, uh, the chief could hit on this, but, uh, the way the tracks card, uh, contract was written when that went back up, I believe the tracks card contract, uh, for the next few years is gonna be about fifty percent of what it was the previous few years, so we are gonna see some savings on that, um, I believe, uh, chief had mentioned, it's something to do with, um, with the hardware was built into the contracts, I don't know if he wants to comment on that, but that's, uh, that was a nice pickup for us as well, if, uh, if you want, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Chief, if you care to comment?
Right, I'd be happy to, uh, so when we, when we signed the agreement with, uh, conduit for the, uh, tracks card services, uh, built into the process too, was, uh, amortization of the equipment costs over the first three years, so that's why the first three years were a little bit more. Uh, we recently exercised the two-year option that, that what makes it, it makes the next two years be, uh, pretty much exactly half the cost of what they were in the first, uh, three years, and then, uh, uh, moving beyond to years six, seven, and eight in the future, they would go up again slightly, but, uh, yeah, we're, we're, uh, leaving about six to seven thousand dollars a month now with this, uh, for the next, uh, two years.
Nice. Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Uh, sure, that, that's all I had, um, on that, um, so if there's any other questions, um, on the front end of the budget, um, move into the, uh, operating departments, is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Unless there's any other questions, I don't wanna.
Yeah, unless somebody else has a question before we move into that. Yeah, so let's, let's just move in.
Okay. All right, um, is this the admin budget, uh, administration, um, again, this is, uh, manager's office, clerk's office, legal, HR, IT, and marketing, uh, again, some of these numbers seem pretty, uh, pretty, pretty. Again, some of these numbers seem pretty, 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 pretty crazy, two hundred percent, five hundred and sixty percent. But again, a lot of this is just reallocating those costs from central services into the operating departments. There was. Go to the next page. So here's a summary by each of the divisions within the administration department. So manager's office was up largely just due to the reallocation of the healthcare costs. The H R, H C M, H C M's human capital management. Again, that minus one point eight million was those healthcare costs going elsewhere. Offset slightly by the increase in property casualty, workers' comp insurance. I T did go up a little bit. I know this came up during the C I P a little bit. Additional licensing fees related to the E R P. And then some potential specialized consulting services. For items related to COVID, system security, things like that. So some of those items were the COVID items that were approved over the summer, that the council approved. Like I said, the firewall, the network switches, and part of that hardware, we actually got back from the county in that second round of funding. So that's kind of why I T is up related to those costs. And then the marketing is just incremental increases in like postage and printing and whatnot. So this is the breakdown, new breakdown of the administration department going forward.
Okay, next.
I, I do have one question.
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
I, I know Alderman Messina has brought up, but like the printing charges and stuff. And I know we were shopping that around, but I, I see that's up budgeted fifteen thousand and we spent twenty-two four eighteen. Are we still, are we not shopping print, our printing services around anymore?
Yeah, I can jump in real quick on there.
Sure, go ahead, Manager Murmas.
Yeah, we always shop around for the lowest price, obviously, but the reason why we have some increased costs is. We are increasing our amount of mailers to get the word out on certain things. For example, this week we're actually working on a senior mailer for vaccination information. So we are trying to expand our public information pieces. So it's not necessarily increased cost because of pieces, increased cost because of more pieces.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Alderman Wood, can I be?
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Alderman Jacob's still a little bit of my thunder, but, yeah. I, I, I know I brought it, it kind of went by the wayside. I know we had some marketing demands. I, I don't know what else we need to do other than to just literally sit there and watch them put orders in. But to me, I, I would like to see a breakdown of marketing costs. That was something I did ask for prior. I won't even go into vendors. I, I don't care what we get for free. I want to see costs at the line item level. So. To me, I'll pass it this time and I, I won't make a, but next year, I, I will refuse to give marketing any more money unless I'm able to see light item. Even if it needs to show up as, as a separate report in the, in the finance report.
So, Mr. Wilson or Mr. Murmas, can we get that for Alderman Messina? And everybody else on the council?
Yeah, I, just for clarification purposes, are you just looking for a breakdown of basically what? Those costs are going to, like twenty thousand is the newsletter and three thousand is?
Right, I mean, si- since I've asked for a consolidation or an effort to consolidate, and that doesn't seem like it happened. I'd, I'd like to personally, I mean, I hopefully the rest of the council does want to see a breakdown of where those funds have gone, maybe in twenty. And where they're anticipated to go in twenty-one. So as they happen in twenty-one, hopefully you can break them out in a separate section in the finance report. To me, I like to see the vendors, like I said. I, I know you guys did a hu- heck of a job when I first started, when it came to some of the other M R O solutions. I just don't see that it happened here. Marketing, and I don't want any more freebies, I don't want any upgrades, that's irrelevant. I want bottom dollar, what are you doing for my residents? And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, do we, do we have Brad, so can we get the stuff for twenty? What would be the timeframe for that?
Yeah.
And I know it would be a while to put together twenty-one or something, but at least if we have something to start with. And then if Alderman Messina needs some correction to the way that's formatted, or anybody else for that matter. Not picking out Alderman Messina.
Nah, Alderman, Alderman was to your point, though. You, no, you bring up a good point. I, I want a unit price. So yes, if, if it's possible, maybe it's a separate report I get. I'd like to see the unit price. I don't want to see, you know, ten side, whatever. A huge bill with different, I want to see line item. I want to see what the unit price per each is on what we purchase. Don't care about upgrades, free lamination, buy one, get ten free. I want to know unit price. What are we paying per item?
Alright, well, we'll, we'll get that. I think everybody else would like to see it too, so.
Thank you. Alderman Woods?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Catala.
When we go out to bid, do we, how many companies do we actually go out to bid on? And do we use local companies?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Uh, yeah, so depending on the price point of the job would really depend on how many vendors we're required to go to. That's different from how many we actually go to, but there are requirements from many we have to go to based on cost. Local vendors. I'm not sure where the localist vendor we go to now, the one that is local, we're not using anymore. So anything we're doing is, uh, somebody that's outside of the six oh one nine one zip code. Like I say, I know, you know, some, most of the ones we're using are north and or west of here, just seeing the bills come through, so.
Follow up.
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Catala.
You know, I, I like to see it goes to local companies. If they can beat the bid, that's fine. If they can't, then we don't use them. But, you know, why shouldn't we give them the opportunity to put a bid in? Especially when they're local, paying taxes or paying property taxes, I could say. So I, I'd like to see that. I mean, if they can't beat the bid, that's fine, okay?
Alderman Woods?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
So Alderman Catala, I, I don't know if you remember, but there was, we were being charged. When Randy looked into the, Alderman Messina looked into printing charges. We were being charged almost like forty, fifty percent more shopping locally than we could elsewhere. And we, we gave, you know, Alderman Messina had asked, and Alderman Messina, if you want to talk, not trying to steal your thunder. But Alderman Messina had asked them to shop it. And, and that's why we're not using local.
So, alright, I think we covered that without going too far. Brad will get to put the report together and then we can go from there. To see. So, aren't any other questions? We can move forward.
Okay. Okay. Next step in the book, City Clerk. Again, this guy rolled into administration. So just to keep everything tight with the reporting, this is just being presented, but there's nothing in here this year. Community development. Again, personnel, part of it, majority of it is the health insurance. The other part is just the first full year of the. Housing zoning inspector being full-time last year was like partial, so he came on mid-year. That's about it. And then again, the contractual. And commodity side of the world, that's really the rolling in of the building maintenance accounts. That used to be in central services. So again, of this increase, you know, what? You know, just under a hundred thousand is just rolling in those line items from central services. And then here's the line items. Operations increase, and then the building maintenance increase for community development.
Okay, next.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, on the community development, Brad. On page forty-nine, it seems like the professional services inspection, plan review services. It seems like it's been going down every year. Is that because we're, we now have full-time people versus doing it with an outside? Source, because I see we went from like one fifty-nine to we budgeted a hundred, now it's down to seventy-nine-five. So is that because we're now, we have somebody full-time doing some of that work, or?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, I can let the Mr. Cage talk on that a little bit more eloquently than you can. But, you know, short version is yes, but I'll let Mr. Cage. More versed than I am on that one.
Chairman Woods, if you may.
Sure, go ahead, enlighten us.
Thank you, sir. Yes, to echo Alderman Jacob's point. Obviously, we have the plan reviewer who is in-house now. That's some savings. And then, as you recall, we made some changes with the inspections. We went to the company's safe build, and what we're finding as time goes on, we're being more efficient in terms of how much we use them, obviously. When we need them, we use them, when we don't, we don't. And I think this was kind of a, an outsourcing plan that we had a number of years ago. And we're really starting to see the fruition, and we've got a really, in my opinion, obviously somewhat biased. I think we found that some significant savings, and then we keep fine tuning it over, you know, each, you know, time period. And that's why we're starting to see the savings now. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Cage.
Like to thank you, thank you, Mr. Cage for working on that. Appreciate the savings there.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving into finance, because I kind of mentioned the, the top real quick, in contractual. We moved audit services, generator grant program. Into finance, sales tax rebates, credit card fees. So the generated grants, credit card fees and sales tax rebates went into other. Which is why the significant increase in other, and then the auditing fees went into contractual services. That's really kind of what's driving that. Actually, it's forty thousand, the auditing services. So net of that, we were able to reduce our contractual services by about four thousand dollars. And I, I, I know what I'm about to say here, but curiously enough, our reduction in four thousand dollars in finance was actually in printing. So take that for what it's worth, but that's, otherwise, nothing significant here in finance.
Nice, next.
Legal, again, like everyone.
Sorry, Alderman Woods, just a quick question, Brad. Are you, are we down an employee? Or, because it looks like it's, I'm counting five, but it says four point two five. So are we down somebody, or?
Mr. Wilson, or is that a allocation, partial allocation across?
Yeah, it's allocation. So the utility billing person here in finance is technically budgeted out of the water fund. Of the utilities.
Okay.
She just operates out of the finance department. From a budgeting standpoint, she's in water, wastewater and utilities. And the point two five is the intern that we typically have to sell vehicle stickers.
Okay, thank you. I just, I didn't know if we lost somebody, or I just, I just noticed it didn't add up, so thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, so again, legal got a role into admin, so we've done through that. Police department. Again, decrease contractual is largely related to the tracks guard contract, which Chief Estha just spoke about a little while ago. Then the increase in other is largely predicated on the moving of the contribution to the police pension fund. Into the police department operating budget. Instead of central services where it was previously budgeted.
Well. Some big numbers. Next.
Board of Fire and Police Commission, nothing really significant here. Just this year, as I noted, it appears that this is the year that they have both patrol and sergeant testing. I believe that happens, is it every six years? So every, every few years, they, they have no testing, and then every, I believe it's every six years, they have both. So this just happens to be the year that they have both in it. But otherwise, nothing significant or out of the ordinary for, for this one.
Okay, Mr. Alderman Jacob, you have a question?
Can we go back to police for one moment?
Sure, good.
Uh, so under investigations, I, I see we budgeted five eighty-nine. And projected five fourteen, and then proposes four ninety-seven. So is this because we have younger people in that department now as detectives? And the people that are making more money are retiring or leaving, or how come that, how come that the salaries are down for the investigations?
Mr. Wilson? Or Chief, if you want to take that, whoever's.
Yeah, I, I can take it, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so. The, the overall police salaries number is also down. Specifically in investigations, right now, we are down one investigator because we're down three patrol positions right now. So we haven't filled, you know, that, we need to fill the street first. So that's where the main thing is. And then with the retirements, obviously, any new hires will be coming in at a lower salary. That's where you see some savings on that side, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Mr. Wilson, you can go.
Sure. This one, unless there's a question. So move on to Public Works Administration. Really, as I kind of said at the top, again, we had removed the facilities manager position. Which was an expanded level item last year, but it was never filled, and we're not gonna look to fill it this year with everything going on. So even pulling the healthcare numbers into Public Works Administration, they, it's still a decrease. Based upon the salary of the facilities manager, otherwise, you know, their budget changed, went down seventeen hundred dollars, so.
Okay, next.
Real quick, sorry.
Sure. I'll just, I'll just call you after each slide.
Perfect. So the, then the gypsy moth spraying, did, we have a new company that we said, it looks like we saved some money, which is great. But that was, was that because of a new company, or did we cut down on that, or?
Mr. Wilson, or?
Sure.
Chairman?
Hold that question for thirty seconds, because that's actually in streets, not Public Works Administration. So just wanna, let me do the bumper on streets here real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries. Well, I mean, really, I don't, Mr. Chairman, if you want, that's fine. It's in streets, but it's fine. Who's the slide for streets, so?
So we're eventually gonna get to his question?
I mean, right now, technically, after I talk about the slide, which is the same as last year, so.
Sorry about that, I skipped the tab.
No worries. Oh, yeah. Yeah, the only thing in streets, income, in contractual, like I said, there, there's an increase. In forestry and landscaping of city properties, and then a slight decrease in parkway tree replacement. So those three together into the stew kind of led to that increase of fifteen thousand dollars. But then that is also the same set of line items that the gypsy moth spraying is out of. So, yeah, I would defer to Mr. Lang for that one, Mr. Chairman, on the gypsy moth.
Sure, is Mr. Lang, do you, is, is, is Mr. Lang here?
I am, Chairman. I can answer that.
Sure, go ahead, thank you.
So we budget for two gypsy moth springs in a year, but typically we're only perform one. The, the second one is done by, you know, in accordance with their monitoring, if it's necessary. So it's ten thousand five hundred for each application, and we only had one in this whole year.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. You can, unless there's any other, okay, none, we can move forward.
Vehicle maintenance. Again, the only thing with personnel is the healthcare. Otherwise, it's a pretty, the status quo budget, there is one item there in the purchase this year. That's been kind of planned for a couple of. Um, that's been kind of planned for a couple of years. So other than that, um, nothing that I have on this one.
Okay, Peter, do you have a?
Nope.
You sure?
I'm proud of you.
And you know, I could wait till next year, I guess, but capital outlay, maybe I missed it in my notes, but what is that?
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, gonna defer to Mr. Lang. I know it's a piece of equipment they're looking to buy, but I don't I don't recall off the top of Mr. Lang.
Mr. Lang, you want to take that?
Sure, Chairman. This is uh, for replacement for our parts washer. We had put in for it a couple fiscal years ago. And we decided that we could extend the life of the one we had now, but now it's nearing the end of its life. So uh, this is for replacement of that.
Thank you.
Thanks. We can move forward, Mr. Wilson.
Sure, thank you. Um, so central services, um, as you've heard me uh, say a number of times, everything got moved out of here. Um, so that's why, again, this goes to zero and that's why we saw some of those significant increases in the other operating departments, but um, um, yeah, central services uh, is effectively closed um, as of May first uh, of this year, so.
Okay, next.
Okay, uh, so that's the last slide um, in the general funds. Um, so next, we're going to go into the special revenue funds. Um, here's a listing of the six of the special revenue funds. Uh, so without further ado, we'll move into uh, road and bridge funds. Um, again, pretty uh, pretty, pretty similar um, on the expenditure side than last year. Um, decrease in five thousand was in uh, traffic signs and traffic control. Other than that, like I said, it's the other costs are are the same um, from previous years. The commodities, the only thing in there is actually the uh, the lights, the natural gas lights in Royal Oaks, that's the only line item in commodities and road.
Okay. Next.
Uh, motor fuel tax. Again, uh, pretty uh, pretty unremarkable. Um, the decrease here, the thirty-five thousand, uh, previously, we had budgeted some uh, road repair, minor road repair, minor patching. Um, you may recall that all of that got consolidated into the one sheet in the CIP on that the the street maintenance sheet. So that's why I went that went down by the thirty-five thousand that just got moved and uh, relocated into the CIP.
Okay, next.
Uh, next is tourism. The uh, decrease um, in other, the significant uh, decrease, a few different things. Um, community events um, down um, with uh, cancellation of Prairie Fest. Also a decrease uh, in community signage as that program is coming uh, near an end or to a nice uh, nice uh, breaking point if nothing else. And then also a decrease in some of the economic development spend with everything we have going on uh, in town right now. That was something that um, you know, thought we could could uh, pump the brakes on a little bit. Um, and all that's predicated on the uh, decline in the hotel motel tax. Um, it's down about, oh, seventy-five percent um, from last fiscal year to this fiscal year.
Wow.
Yeah. I was just uh, on a webinar yesterday uh, where we talked about it and it's, you know, uh, this area is holding up a little bit better than downstate uh, just because of the city itself. But downstate um, is actually in worse shape than Chicago and than the collar counties are, so.
Getting crushed.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Alderman Jacob, you have a question?
Yeah, just on the hotel tax, we're, I I do see just from your uh, our budget, we we went up from three seventy-seven to four thirty-five and we, we were expecting more tourism before COVID hit or?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, um, the the numbers, um, e- even if I go back another year, had been trending up um, pretty well the last few years. You know, with the three ninety coming through and so, yeah, we it uh, I think even the hotels that were having um, higher occupancy rates and things of that nature. So we were expecting to continue it continue uh, to go up. Um, you know, twenty twenty was obviously down. But um, you know, the world ended, what, uh, middle of March last year? So that was the last two months of fiscal twenty. So that's why those numbers um, look, it it does look a little little wonky if you look at it, but yeah, losing um, last month and a half, two months of twenty twenty kind of started the the nosedive of the uh, hotel motel tax money. And then we are expecting it to come back a little bit, um, but not knowing um, when uh, it's going to come back. I know my typical, my uh, national conference is supposed to be here in Chicago and they've basically already canceled it because Chicago is still just allowing twenty-five people in a room of a certain size. And there's normally six thousand people. So they're like, we would need to rent out literally every large room in downtown Chicago just to have a conference. Um, and then they're also saying that the speakers have to rotate, not the people. Um, so even in breakout rooms, you can't even do different groupings of people right now um, downtown because they're not allowing the people to move. You just have to have the speaker to move. So um, right now, there's really no way to have any conferences or anything downtown or in in any of these regions right now. So it's 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 going to come back a little bit, hopefully, but um, uh, you know, with the conference market and everything being effectively dead right now, it's 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 going to be a while.
Okay, yes, one more, one more question, just.
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Um, Brad, I I know, you know, we got some funding that, you know, because of COVID for like to help the businesses and we were able to help the businesses and things were, was there anything given or provided to the hotels we have in town? Any thing to help them out? I mean, I know, you know, I I know we got the money from the that they divvied up by county, the county divvied up.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I'm not a hundred percent certain if they um, have to get a COC. Um, but that's not a lot. Um, I guess the biggest thing that they would have been able to avail themselves of was the uh, waiving of the fees of the liquor license because the hotels do have liquor licenses. Um, but aside from that, um, I don't believe there was anything else that the hotels would have been able to specifically avail themselves of with the different offerings that we had.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, uh, next, Mr. Wilson?
Sure, um, narcotics forfeiture. Uh, this is the uh, the canine unit um, for the police. I, yeah.
Um, no questions next.
District one, uh, the Thorndale corridor. Really, the only thing that that's currently budgeted in here that's that's really known at this time is uh, this eight hundred thousand dollar transfer, which is actually going to the CIP um, for the new public works facility. Um, that right now, like I said, it's the only kind of known quantified project. Um, I would be shocked if there isn't a project or two or three that that pops up throughout the year. But uh, as we were preparing the budget, there was nothing, you know, uh, in ink that that we felt comfortable uh, putting in here. So, um, and obviously, as with uh, you know, the economic development items, uh, those come back to the council, you know, to get vetted and uh, approved. So anything that would really pop up in here would uh, come back uh, before it uh, got approved and and spent, so.
Next.
Uh, so district two, um, this contractual, um, this money in here uh, was for um, a proposed project um, that you may recall did not come to fruition. Uh, at the time of the preparation of the budget, um, there was not any known quantified and or approved projects um, in district two. Um, that's possible, likely to change. But again, um, at the time that the budget was prepared, uh, there was nothing known and quantified um, for us to be able to put in here.
Uh, next.
Capital Projects Funds, uh, we have two. Uh, one is the General Capital Project Fund, which is the CIP, uh, which was the meeting we had back in January and then the land acquisition fund. Um, so going into um, CIP, um, again, this is what uh, we discussed back on the fourteenth. Um, we did uh, incorporate a couple of changes that were made. Um, you know, moving the uh, Irving Park Street Lights back. Um, we moved the uh, surveillance cameras and uh, some money uh, for um, technical assistance up. We also pulled the um, I forget the intersection, but the the parking um, down off of was the Third Avenue. Um, that project got uh, pulled in as well. So those changes that were discussed and approved that night at the CIP were incorporated into.
I have a question.
Budgeted.
Sure, go ahead, Mayor.
Brad, you said the the cameras or something was put in? I thought there was going to be more discussion because there was the discussion, is it just going to be on Irving Park? Is it going to be on every every entrance to the city and we were going to get numbers? I didn't realize that there was a a definite answer on which way we were going.
Well, uh, for one, I think that passing this doesn't buy the light, so we're going to have probably two, three more discussions before we get there. But Mr. Wilson, do you want to take that?
Um, yeah, um, yeah, just going back through our notes, um, I believe there was a discussion on putting up a couple of more, but then there was also talk about adding, you know, LPRs or something like that, which um, my notes had indicated with the council did not want to do. Um, so just based upon kind of the way the conversation went, um, all of our notes internally still had two uh, cameras. Um, obviously, those aren't set in stone as to where they would go. Um, but that's that's all of our notes still kind of had, um, you know, putting in uh, budget authority for what we reasonably expected to be two cameras. Uh, as Alderman Woods said, if we get into it, then it needs to be, you know, one or four. Um, we can, we can certainly look into that. But that's kind of when we were um, conferring internally, that's kind of where we all uh, settled at.
Mayor, is that?
Uh, so what's that number you put in here? I'm trying to find it here. I'm just.
Mr. Wilson, do you have that number for the?
Yeah, give me one second. I'm.
Sure.
Ninety-five percent. Sure, I'm right, but I s- I don't want to.
What line item is it, Brad?
Um, it, you know. Uh, let me see. It's included in um, the police department's uh, line item, so it's included in um, police department improvements.
It's in the line item, okay.
Yeah, there's actually three numbers that kind of all roll into that one. Um, so the number that was put in um, originally in the draft was CIP was forty thousand in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we moved it into twenty-two and added ten thousand um, for either technical assistance or, you know, depending on pricing came in. So fifty thousand was added to the fiscal twenty-two budget.
Okay.
For cameras.
Okay, you kind of threw me. I'm I was, I thought that was unsettled and whatnot. So, okay, got it.
All right, uh, Mr. Wilson, next.
Sure. Um, land acquisition fund, um, right now, um, again, there's there's currently nothing planned for there. Um.
Zero, 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 next.
Yeah, um, so uh, that's it for the uh, capital projects funds. Um, enterprise funds, like you said, commuter parking lot, sanitation, water sewer capitals closed, that actually became a division in the water and sewer operating fund. Um, and then water sewer operating. Uh, so moving into um, commuter parking lot. The kind of, I guess, the only interesting thing is this increase in the uh, interfund transfer here. Curiously enough, um, we had budgeted an additional one hundred and seventy-five thousand in fiscal twenty-one for the work to be done at uh, the metro lot in CIP. The project got pushed off and then bumped up to two hundred thousand, which rolled into uh, fiscal twenty-two. So um, two hundred or one hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-five thousand of this did not get spent and just the authority just got re-rebudgeted in here. So it um, when you look at the actuals, it's a little bit more of a peak and valley scenario, but um, it's it's the project that got put off or kind of uh, sprucing up the uh, metro lot. Um, didn't get spent on the twenty-one, just got a little bit twenty-two.
Can I be recognized, Alderman?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Kettleman.
What do we cha- what do we charge for parking over there at the parking lot?
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, it's uh, one fifty uh, a day.
A day? Is it, are we compatible with all the that are grounded suburbs or are we the lowest or the? We must be.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, um, I honestly don't know that we've done a survey lately. I know when we raised it to one fifty, we were one of, I think, I think we were the last one on the line that wasn't at one fifty. Um, honestly, like I said, I don't, I don't know that we've done a line survey in the last couple of years.
Can can we do one? Al- also, uh, when's the last time we raised it anyway? It was a, it was a while back, right?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I want to say it was when we redid the lot, which was.
I think so.
Eight or eight or nine years ago, probably.
Yep.
Well, that's a bargain. Yes, because I know I park at Forest Park and I pay close to four dollars at a municipal lot. So I'm just just saying, maybe we should look at that in the in the near future.
Good idea.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Jacob?
Yeah, I I was just going to say, I mean, it looks like parking revenues are down from sixty-eight thousand to seventy-five hundred, so. I I think right now we should just hold the line on everything till things start getting back to normal.
Well, he didn't say raise it tomorrow.
No, I didn't say.
And and revenues are down because nobody's going to work.
Well.
You don't know if that'll ever come back.
We'll have that.
Yeah, that that we can have that conversation down the road. So, uh, next, Mr. Wilson?
Uh, next to the sanitation fund, um, you know, this is really uh, predominantly money in, money out. Uh, we collect money on the utility bills for um, for the garbage service. Uh, we pay the garbage company and then there's the interfund transfer. Um, really, the only other couple of adds and ends in here is the uh, Wooddale for a greener tomorrow. And then uh, just a little bit of allocation for uh, credit card processing fees, but the the vast majority is uh, the money uh, back out to uh, Flood Brothers and then just the interfund transfer.
All right, now, next.
Sure, give me one second, just to. Uh, next one's water and sewer capital projects. As I said, that was closed out uh, last fiscal year and the division called Capital uh, was created within the water and sewer uh, operating fund, so.
Zero, 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 next.
Yeah.
I I have one more question, Alderman.
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Kettleman.
I was looking at page nine ninety, uh, ninety-five on the uh, the credit card fees.
Yes.
So the uh, the budget, what uh, forty if was at thirteen thousand five, then dropped down to fifteen hundred, the projected. What was the reason for that?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, um, so as Alderman Jacob had mentioned, that there's um, significantly fewer people um, using the metro lot right now.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, so those fees are really from the daily riders and daily rider fees went uh, from uh, about sixty-five thousand, this is over seventy-two thousand in nineteen, about sixty-five thousand in twenty. Um, and then in uh, this fiscal year with the COVID, um, we're probably going to be around seventy-five hundred, so.
Okay, a follow-up. So do all departments in um, in all other departments, do we charge credit card fees? I mean, I I know, I know we do it on the water bill, but all the other, like the uh, permanent department, the police department, when the they have to pay by credit card?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, um, yeah, I don't want to speak for the police department because they have a different uh, different uh, setup. Um, but, yeah, so the water bills, um, Yeah, so the water bills, um, are, right now, they're still a dollar when we go, uh, live with the ERP. About a year ago, year and a half ago, um, the council had approved two dollars for that. Uh, all the other miscellaneous are gonna go to two dollars as well. Um, and then anything related to the building department fees are gonna go from the dollar, two-dollar thing to a percentage. Of the permit fee, so the fifteen thousand dollar billing permit that the builders are getting charged the dollar for now. Is we gonna come, you know, a three or three and a half percent.
Good.
Fee to help offset that. Yeah, that was, that was approved, like I said, when we started the ERP. And then, um, it's kind of got, uh, bogged down a little bit, but yeah, that, um, so everything is, um, getting charged and like I said, just. When we go live with these different phases, those new fees are gonna, uh, come into play for sure.
And, uh.
Pick on the builder again.
And, and the police department, they have a different system or?
Mr. Wilson?
As far as charging fees?
Yeah, um, I have to defer to the chief, um.
Chief, you wanna, no?
Sure.
Chairman?
I can take that, so, the, uh, the, the credit cards that we accept here, uh, for administrative toll. So that's subject to arrest, uh, DUI suspended, uh, no license, uh, you know, crimes in progress stuff. We use an outside processing company called Government Payment Services. And the person in order to pay by credit card for those fees, they pay an additional fee directly when they process the transaction. So we get the full amount and, uh, that uses the card pays a convenience fee to the company for processing it through their, their system.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm glad to see the fees are going down, um, eventually, you know. Thank you.
Sure, go ahead, Mayor.
Brad, there was a discussion about credit cards, certain cards get charged certain fees. Was that specifically for what? For the water, for the building department? How did that work? Because I remember that we had the conversation. Certain cards, depending on the cardist, depending what the service charge is gonna be.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, um, that is correct, um, so, you know, your global platinum miles business card. Um, has the highest fee that we get charged where just your, you know, bank, single person debit card. Probably has the lowest fee, um, so when we're going through, um, the analysis of our fees and what kind of settlement. Um, that's why we went from the one dollar to two dollars, is most of the cards, most of our average tickets. Would, would largely be covered, um, by the two-dollar fee, um, based upon our most, uh. Our most ordinary type of card usage, um, until, like we said, uh, no disrespect, Alderman Woods. Um, until we get into the building department fees and then two dollars would not cover a lot of the billing permit charge. Um, so that's why that's gonna switch over to a percentage, uh, based upon the type of card that it is, um, so that we're not getting, uh. Uh, losing or that, to, to try to balance that out a little bit.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're, you are correct, um, but yeah, and that, that was part of the conversation we had with A M S. When we were determining how to set, um, those different fee structures going forward.
All right, next.
Shoot, um, so, uh, going into the, uh. Uh, water and sewer, uh, fund. Um. You know, there's not a, a lot of, uh. Uh.
All zeros.
Stuff here, yeah, um, the only thing I, I would note, um, is, you know, with the rate increases, it, it shows this hundred and ten. Um, if you look at the, um, projected revenue. For this, um, for charges for services, which is on page one oh one, we're projecting the revenue to be about eight point four million. Um, which is, again, why we had the discussion we had about raising the rates, and so. This number, this, uh, nine point three is, uh, acknowledging those, uh, rate increases that are gonna go in effective August first. And so tha- that's why these look a little bit tighter than you probably would have thought, um, based upon. Um, the rate increase conversation we have, but this is the budget number, not what the actual was gonna be, so. And then, actually, the decrease, I was just saying, the decrease here, uh, was we had a project, um. For a water, uh, for the, uh, the booster station that was within the TIF, so we were able to use some TIF funding to. Uh, pay for that project, so that's why, um, this, uh, this transfer went away, uh, for this year.
Nice. Next.
Sure. Um, so the operating expenses, high level, um, utilities going about thirty-three thousand, wastewater, seventy-six thousand. Um, capital, uh, is coming down some, um, again, this was discussed at C I P, but, uh, you know, a large. Portion of this is the, uh, the Ward for I N I program. Um, but like I said, in utilities and wastewater, um, we'll get to it in a second, but predominantly, um, just, uh, status quo. Um, relative to, to all the budgets, so. So, uh, moving into, um, utilities here, um, you can kind of see how things moved around a little bit. Uh, the one thing that is a little, little more, um, pronounced than others. Um, is the interfund transfer. Um, so what we did to try to, uh, better cost out each of the divisions was we reallocated the transfer to SURF. Um, we, we split it up, divvied up the SURF contribution from the utilities division and the wastewater division. So the net amount is the same, um, it just, it's just how it got allocated between the two divisions, um, changed a little bit. Um. Other went down based on, uh, depreciation based upon the last audit and. Uh, the increase in contract commodities is ten thousand, um, it's just a little bit of an increase, uh, in water purchase from the DuPage Water Commission. Um, but otherwise, like I said, everything else is, I think, uh, the same, uh, throughout the, uh, utilities budget.
Okay, next. Oh, Alderman, hang on a second, Alderman Jacob, you had a question?
Yeah, page one oh two, so with, so for the whole water and sewer fund, for the end of this. We're projecting, uh, fiscal year twenty-one to be in the negative by almost two million dollars.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, um, so, again, with depreciation, um, yes, if you forget it. On a cash basis, we move up a couple lines, the line with the box around it.
Yep.
Um, that eight seventy, um, that's really where we're expecting it to come in. Um, you know, at least half of that, um, was the, uh, increased I N I work over in Ward Four. Uh, and then the other part of that was just kind of the, um. Stagnation or the decrease in the revenues again, so, um, again, and then see, uh, that number right there really. Kind of horns and it speaks to the, uh, rate increase discussion that we had, um, a couple of weeks ago.
And then one other question.
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
So then with, with the changes that we approved, we're expecting next year to end up at about five eighty-four.
Correct.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Next.
Uh, sure, uh, wastewater, um, this is summary of the wastewater expenses. Um, again, the transfer, the interfund transfer, again, that's the other side of that, uh. Reallocation of the SURF transfer of two hundred thousand dollars and then the twelve-five, uh, as I mentioned, was for the, uh. Facilities manager that, um, wasn't hired, other again was depreciation. Um, principal payments, interest payments, um, you know, those are a teeter totter, one goes up, one goes down. Uh, as you pay off the principal and interest and we all, you know, how your mortgage works at home. Um, contractual services, um, there was an increase in, uh, lift station maintenance. And a little bit of the property casualty insurance, and that's, uh, really the only thing, uh, of any significance. Uh, from a change standpoint in the wastewater division.
Next.
Uh, there's the notes. Uh, the capital division, um, can, uh, be discussed, um. The C I P meeting, um, this year's two hundred and twenty thousand in water, eight hundred and twenty in wastewater, which is the I N I work. And about seventy-five thousand for plant maintenance, just, uh, in case something comes up, um, at either of the plants that we need to take care of.
Okay, uh, next.
Uh, internal service funds, uh, we have the SURF fund. Um. You know, so the SURF fund, um, you know, it's kind of the sinking fund where we fund, you know, depending on the vehicle, a fifth or a sixth. Of the vehicle every year, um, to kind of avoid the, uh, the. The funding spikes. Um. But, uh, what that leads to though, cuz we, we smoothed out the funding, um, but then if you look at the schedule, some years, there's more purchases than others. So, um, as we're getting into fiscal twenty-two, um, there are more vehicles, uh, on the schedule for twenty-two. Or more, uh, costlier vehicles on the schedule, uh, for twenty-two, uh, versus twenty-one. But again, we've already accounted for that by pre-funding these over the last few years, so it's, uh, not, uh. Not, uh, as concerning, because like I said, it's, it's, we've already been accounting for that, um, over the last few years.
Sure, Mayor?
Well, Brad, just, just to clarify, so this fund, we put money away every year. Uh, I know the ending balance looks like we got a lot of money in there, one point nine million dollars at the end of this coming fiscal year in this new budget. But, once we start replacing those large plow trucks. In the, in the next few years, as we replace those, this fund will start to diminish somewhat. Just so people understand, it's not, it's not two million dollars just sitting there because we feel like it.
Mr. Wilson?
Y- yeah, no, that's correct, um, and, and that point, we're, we're smoothing out the funding of the vehicles. Um, so that the spend can be a little, um, less linear on the backend. Um, which is exactly the point of it, and to your point, you know, out, uh, a couple of years. You know, you look at the water fund and they're looking at almost three quarters of a million dollars in spend in two vehicles. Um, so again, trying to smooth that out, you know, we're funding, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand every year of that, so that we get there. It's not, uh, you know, basically punching a hole in the budget for a half million dollar vehicle. Um, so, yeah, so we're smoothing out the funding, so, um, so that the, the spend can be a little more erratic as needed. Based upon Mr. Lang and his team, uh, working on the schedule every year, trying to, to, to keep things going and extend lives where they can. And things of that nature.
Uh, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, Brad, I, I know we kind of talked about the police vehicles, cuz they were like delayed, what, whatever it was, eight or ten months. And you had said you were kind of curious to see where that would end, what, what, where is that being affected? You said that would affect the fu- the, this fund.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, um, so really, um, if you would look at page, uh, say one fourteen. Um, and so we'd have to go back and layer in last year's schedule, um. But, uh, if you give me one second here.
Again, I just remembered you saying that we are, it was gonna be affected because of that eight-month delay. So we didn't technically pay for it in the year we ordered it, because they took so long.
Yeah, yep, see, I give me one, one second here. Yeah, so in, uh, in fiscal twenty, um, the budget for governmental vehicles was. Just to freeze of math, four hundred thousand, and the budget for enterprise vehicles was three sixty-eight. Um, and all those vehicles, um, especially on the governmental side, were ordered within fiscal year twenty. And based upon normal arrival times would have been there for about a four hundred thousand dollar, um, budget cost. But on page one fourteen, you can see we wound up spending less than fifty thousand, um, just because we didn't get any of the vehicles within the fiscal year. Just cuz the lead times just kept getting pushed out and pushed out. Um, and so that's why in twenty-one, we're projecting three hundred closer to budget, because some of those from twenty bled over. Uh, but then what we also realized was that, you know, as, uh, Deputy Chief Free said. The ones that we just purchased probably won't be here until the fall, so that number, that three hundred thousand is, is probably high based upon the reality. Um, so you're gonna definitely see that be a little, uh. A little more pronounced in the actuals, um, these next couple of years as that, uh, that pipeline kind of gets cleaned up a little bit. Um, so, but that would be where you would see that, uh, is in the inner, in the, especially in the governmental line item for those police vehicles. Um, kind of the, the peaks and valleys of that, um, budget versus actual, just based upon the timing of, of all those vehicle deliveries.
And the only other question I had was, is that, uh, do we, when we order these vehicles, do they. Get some type of deposit or anything from us, or they're fully paid when we receive the vehicles?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, no, we pay when we receive the vehicle.
Okay, so we don't have to give them any deposit to hold the vehicle or order the vehicle for us?
No, um, they just request that we do a purchase order, um, indicating that the council did authorize the, uh, the purchase. Um, and I know the chief, uh, has, has had his, uh, department already prepare those, um, we signed them, uh, last week. Um, so we, I know, we don't, uh, put anything down and then, then wait for it. We, when we get the vehicle, that's when we pay for the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Uh, so we're into the trust agency funds, uh, police pension, special service area. Uh, so the police pension fund. Um. Yeah, the, uh, and again, um, this is really controlled by the police pension fund itself. Um, the increase in others related to benefit payments, um, AKA more retirees, um, you know, taking benefits. A little bit of an increase in investment expenses, I'm not sure how this budget's gonna look in a couple of years, uh, with the consolidation. But as of right now, we're still kind of moving in the direction that we've been moving in, um, like I said, um, until we're told otherwise, so.
Question?
Sure, Mayor, go ahead.
Brad, I know you just mentioned the consolidation, but our funds aren't co-mingled with anybody else's funds, right? We're still gonna have our own number, correct?
Technically correct, but go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, technically, uh, correct, um, you know, they said it's gonna look, um, I guess, and feel. In very kind of like how the I M R F reports look, uh, I guess, where, where I said the budget, I'm not just sure, cuz right now. Um, you know, um, Lauterbach and Eamon and the investment, uh, companies kind of. Assist us in large part to create this budget based upon the actuarial tables and what they expect the markets to do over the next year. So that's why I said, I'm not sure, um, what type of information we're gonna get flowing to us, uh, once that consolidation takes place. Um, you know, on this side, I, you know, you know, if the investments aren't ours, then there's gonna be no investment expense, great. But I'm sure there's gonna be some other, you know, uh, consolidation, you know, management fees or investment fees we're gonna have to pay to. Investment managers of the consolidation, so that's what, we're just not sure how all that's gonna look, um. In a couple of years, what the. What information we're gonna get back from, uh, from the consolidation.
Uh, questions?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Smartsky.
It's for, maybe, I don't know if the chief could answer it, or you might be able to answer it. For consolidating this, the state's gonna take this over, correct?
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, correct.
Are they gonna charge us for doing this work? Is there gonna be a fee involved that we don't know about yet?
That was an oxymoron question, right? We don't know about.
I, I know the answer, I just wanna hear it, I just wanna hear what they're gonna say.
Want me to take that?
Sure, go ahead, Chief.
All right, um, yeah, so there's gonna be two parts of this, one is there is gonna be an annual administrative fee to.
Of course there is.
Whatever our funds are, and also, uh, the proposed consolidation, they're gonna be forced to liquidate. Investments, which is also gonna cost the fund, especially, uh, in, in bond market and some of the other.
Exactly.
Funds, and, and the state is not covering that cost, so, um, that's.
So there.
That answer your question, Mike?
Yeah, another fun idea from the state, all right, thank you.
So, uh, uh, next. So, uh, uh, next.
Um, special service area fund, uh, again, right now, uh, this is really just paying the debt service on the last few years of the bonds, uh, for special service areas twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. If you recall, we did refinance those a couple of years ago, um, kind of about a year and a half of the debt service. Um, so I believe there's three more years left on these, and then they'll be done. Um, eleven was paid off last year, so eleven is, uh, no longer in play. And then, um, you may recall, we did, um, change the, the life on fifteen and sixteen to be, uh, dormant in perpetuity, but as there's been nothing issued against them, there's nothing for us to pay or do, so that's why fifteen and sixteen is not showing up on here, so. Uh, effectively, like I said, it's just a debt service fund, uh, as of today, for these three, uh, bond issues.
All right, next. Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any other questions? Sure, Alderman.
I make a, make an recommendation, we accept the budget as read?
Second.
Motion?
I'll second that.
I'd like, like to thank staff and, uh, city manager murmurs for the great work they've done throughout the year creating this budget, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I will have to say they did a good job keeping all the expenses in line, given all the unknowns that we had. Uh, and yet kept all the services up, so I think everybody did a good job here, so we have a motion, we have a second, do we have any other questions? There being none, roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yep.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
All right, that passes, next, items to be considered at future meetings, I don't have any, is there anything anybody would like to see put on there? There being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes, we are adjourned, gentlemen. Thank everybody.